Sorry?
Yes.
Here comes somebody.
Jeremy.
Oh, good. Now, the cruel thing is all in favor of say aye, aye, up Jeremy your chair.
Yeah.
You got a space over here for me, Jeremy. Okay, so I will convene the meeting, just by way of explanation to the public, this is the organizational meeting of the Leland and Gray Union High School District Board in 24. And every year after town meeting, when we have newly elected members of the board, whether we have newly elected members or returning members of the board, the purpose of this meeting is to give an opportunity for the board to elect officers once again on an annual basis. And so it's my duty and responsibility to either convene the meeting or have some neutral party as designate convening the meeting. So I'm convening the meeting as of 7:12 it looks like to me, something like that. And first order of business, as you can see on the agenda, is to welcome people. And new elected board members, I think maybe perhaps we should just go around and introduce all ourselves, and we will also introduce any members of the public. So why don't we start with you, Mike?
Hi, I'm Mike Dolan, I'm from Townsend.
I'm Twyla Holden, I'm from Townsend as well.
And Lindell Ball from Brookline.
Patty Dixon from Jamaica.
Baman Madavi from Newfane.
Jeremy Kelly from Newfane.
Howard Iris from Wyndham.
Joe Winrich from Townsend.
Stephen John Superintendent.
Durin Dorfman Principal.
Jeanine Aguswara Webster, I'm a student here.
Sam Donald, also a student.
So we have missing from the board newly elected Kelly.
Kelly Warner, and she said she's stuck on the top of Newfane because of the mud season.
Okay.
Newfane Hill was a Quagmire.
Yeah. So we have, that's accounting of everybody from Newfane, because Emily Long, the previous chair, is actually at a meeting, she was unexpectedly, she unexpectedly rose to the position of president of the Vermont School Boards Association. As a result of town meeting, the previous president of the association was not elected as a board member, and you can't serve as the president of the Vermont School Boards Association without being a board member. So as a vice president, she is now the president of the entire School Boards Association for the state of Vermont with fifteen hundred, over fifteen hundred members. She is attending regional meetings that are advising board members of the ideas in the legislature about restructuring. That is governance, that is perhaps turning an SU into a single school district, one board, perhaps turning a union school district such as Leland and Gray into a pre-K-12 single board unit. Obviously, this is quite controversial, and certainly the School Boards Association wants to give all members an opportunity to discuss their views on this issue, and it isn't just specifically that, there are a number of other ideas, and those piece of information, I think have been shared with people, with board members previously on the board, the newer members, you may not be quite hooked up with your membership at the state level, so if you're missing something, don't hesitate to call my office, that's three six five ninety-five ten. And Allison will do her best to get it fixed up as quickly as possible. And that's the same number for you guys, right? Okay, members of the public.
Nancy Dyke Wyndham.
Jerry Dyke Wyndham.
And we have Peter, you want to introduce yourself?
Oh, Peter Barris, I'm the notes, the minutes recorder.
All right, Peter comes to us from Whitingham, actually, drives quite a ways to do this for us, but we appreciate his service. And we do have a cameraman, you want to introduce yourself there? He's giving me the shit, okay. All right, he's invisible. All right, now we have reorganization of the board, election of chair, so nominations are open for electing a chair of the board.
I nominate Baman Madavi.
Who would nominate, please?
Howie Iris from Wyndham.
Baman Madavi has been nominated. Are there other nominations? Nominate Emily Long. Emily Long's been nominated.
Who, please?
Emily Long. She has informed me she's willing to serve, called. Are there other nominations? Hearing none, seeing none, presume we're ready for a vote?
Baman, you love her.
Want to go by?
Totally caught off guard here.
Why me, what did I do? All right, well, in your aid, it's nice to have an election. Is everybody ready for the vote? Okay, so let's, I guess we better do, well, we'll try the ayes and, no, we can't do the ayes and nays, we've got to do a vote, so it's got to be show of hands, comfortable with that, otherwise we'll do paper. Anybody want paper? Do hands? All who's in favor of Baman Madavi?
Aye.
All who's in favor of Emily Long?
Vote.
All right, so Emily Long is elected. Presume, Peter, you could record those numbers?
Sure.
All right, and moving on then, I would hand, sorry?
I was showing hands, you want the count?
Yeah.
Could you put them up, please, again?
Well, it's, well, it's one.
It's one and?
I think everybody else voted, right?
Did everybody? Thank you.
Okay. Now, I would ordinarily turn over the meeting to the chair, but the chair being absent, now I have to call on you to elect a vice chair. Are the nominations vice chair?
I nominate Joe Winrich.
Joe Winrich's been nominated. Any other nominations? We're going by informal rules there, by the way, no second required for nominations. Any further nominations?
Who nominated Joe?
Baman. Seeing none and hearing none, we're ready for vote? All who's in favor of Joe Winrich as vice chair, taking five by saying aye?
Aye.
opposed nay? I think you have unanimous vote, abstentions? Yep, it's unanimous. All right, take it over, thank you so much, you got your list?
I do.
Okay, great, I'll keep recording here, thank you.
Okay. Next, we need to elect a clerk. Any nominations for that?
Bruce Parliament. To bed does not hear.
Should have showed up.
Yep.
Any other nominations? All right, all in favor of Bruce Parliament as clerk, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Leave the ayes have it. Okay, next is authorized signatures for the board. Let me explain, that means when the board is not in session or subsequent to the board's approval of the payroll and so forth, we have signatories that are official. Smaller boards sometimes appoint everybody, but I think in your case it'd probably be advisable to have three signatures. The chair can always sign a legal document and then later on have it approved by the full board, if it, you know, if it were necessary in an emergency or crunch.
What has it been previously?
The officers.
I think it was the officers, yeah.
All move to have it be the officers again.
I'll give you a second.
Yes.
I'll second.
Is Mike moving to what?
To be the officers again.
To be the officers as the signatories.
Ah, good, okay.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to have the officers be the authorized signatories. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Oh, great.
Motion passes. We need, we need a paper of record, I believe our current one is the reformer, let's see.
Right. And that frankly, you don't have too much choice, you could also designate the commons, but that only comes out, you know, every week at most, and so we, we have to have something that's more daily for our warnings.
Move to use the reformer as our paper of record.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to make the Rattleboro reformer our paper of record. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We need to set the time and date for our meetings. Is that, do we set that now currently as the second to the fourth Tuesday?
No, it's just the second Tuesday. Or is it just the second Tuesday? Okay. Each month at seven o'clock at the library here, Leland and Gray, that's what you have now.
Okay.
Whether it's convenient or the board wants to continue, it's up to you.
I'll move we continue, it's the second?
Second Tuesday. Seven o'clock, Leland and Gray.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion about moving that or changing that? All right, all in favor of meeting second Tuesday of the month at seven at Leland and Gray, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
I'll say something more about meeting schedule for new members of the board. We try to preserve Wednesdays for Wyndham Central Supervisor Union Board meetings. Usually it's the fourth Wednesday of the month if we have a meeting, we don't have a meeting every month, there are only about four or five a year. But also that's a time when committee meetings might occur, or meetings that would involve more than one board, we try to keep Wednesday kind of open, so that members of different boards can get together if they needed to. Certainly preserve, certainly reserve the fourth Wednesday of the month in May, March, and November. Yeah, those are definitely, and August is being board meeting, that's traditionally what the WCSU board meets, and that, those decisions will be made at the next meeting the WCSU board has, which is March twenty-sixth.
Okay, next we need a truant officer, that's currently Wyndham sheriff, right?
Move to name Wyndham County Sheriff Department as our truant officer.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to name the Wyndham County Sheriff as the truant officer. Discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We need, we have one representative to the WCSU Policy Committee?
Right, and we haven't met for about two years, but I intend to keep it that way, but if, just to let you know, you're not sticking your neck out too far here, but the purpose of this body, this committee, would be to review any mandatory, universally mandatory policies that might come from the legislature, in an effort to make things more efficient for boards who eventually have to approve anyway. And the reason why the committee hasn't met is because since after the truancy policy and the class size policy was reviewed by this committee different years, and we made every attempt to get it right, it still took me over a year to get the boards to agree to vote on it, so I just don't think it's worthwhile to have an extra meeting just for the trouble of it. Sorry to be so cynical about the ability of these boards to agree on things, but that's the way it is.
Who's our current representative?
Uh, well, hmm, we haven't met for a long time.
Do we have?
Well, you haven't met yet. I think it doesn't matter who you appoint at this point, I don't, I don't have a list, and I don't, we haven't met, but I think it'd be, you know, welcome anybody who's interested in policy to step forward.
So if the meetings are only every two years, I think I should be able to handle it.
No promises, but I'm, that's my intention.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Twyla Holden as our representative on the WCSU Policy Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next, we need three WCSU board representatives, I believe they are currently Emily, me, and Bruce.
The officers, right?
It's, it just happened that way. It can be any board member who's interested in serving. And you're all welcome, you're all welcome to attend.
No. This is, this one's written in law, I don't think I can.
Yeah, this one I don't think we can do. I know Emily's willing to serve again, so I would nominate Emily.
Can we nominate all three in one?
I don't see why not.
Can I nominate Emily, Joe, and Bruce to continue on as representative on the WCSU board?
Sure.
Second.
Any other nominations? You can nominate yourself if you want a seat on the WCSU board.
You can also go to those board meetings, I mean, kind of the state.
All this is as a voting member, you know, Leland and Gray, right now the WCSU board for, mostly for you, Twyla, because I know you know how it works, Howie, each board has representation on that board, and it's based on school size. So Leland and Gray has three voting members, you know, other schools have less voting members.
Just correct you, if you have a school, it's three, if the board has no school, it's one.
Sorry, I got the red in there.
So Wyndham has three, you have three, I mean, despite the size of the school difference, by law, it's the same number of votes for any school district that's operating a school.
That's right, too many years in the red committee meetings where we changed it around in terms of relations, that's what I was looking at. Yeah, it's what Stephen said, so every school has three voting members, but you can still go, anyway.
And influence those members to vote the way you want, right?
That's a good dinner.
Especially if you bring food.
Yeah.
Well, it's not always a dinner meeting.
It's a children's, sorry.
Hearing no more nominations.
It's going to be a big meal.
All in favor of having Emily, me, and Bruce Parliament continue as the WCSU board representatives, say aye?
Aye.
Any, all opposed? None? All right, the ayes have it. All right, do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda? Bless you.
No, I don't think so, let's see, executive session. We gonna need one? No, I don't think so.
Okay, no executive session, good. I know Lindell had a little piece of news that she wanted to just bring up under new business, a student that had won an award. Okay, members of the public, Nancy, Jerry, do you have any words of wisdom for us?
Right now.
Okay.
I want to just commend Nancy and Jerry for coming to these meetings. Now, I actually have had reason to be in the State House recently to testify before the Senate and the Senate House committees, and not surprisingly, I've run into these two characters up there, and they're obviously taking a very high interest in education, both at the town, the union district, and the state, so I really commend them for their interest, and I want to thank them for their attendance, they certainly have also attended the red committee, study committee meetings quite regularly, and it's just really wonderful.
That's what I thought this was tonight.
It's wonderful to see citizens, no, that's May seventh, put that down for May seventh. It's really wonderful to see citizens coming out regularly to keep apprised of the situation, so, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any correspondence?
No. No.
Wait a minute, I have a very fine piece of correspondence here. It's about money.
Do they want it, or are they giving it to us?
I know they're giving it to you, and it's, it's an amazingly small amount.
Amazingly small amount.
Or you get too excited about spending, I think.
You mean our budget woes aren't over?
Well, anyway, Frank, it has to do with the fact that we were members of the VISBIT, anyway, it's, it's around something, something in the neighborhood of $500 or something like that. You were a member, this, this district was a member of the VISBIT Workman's Compensation Insurance, I don't really go out of trust, but anyway, this was, and this is from nineteen eighty-six, I think, to nineteen ninety-nine. And then, if you were a member with VISBIT through two thousand and one with their other insurance, then you got credit, you got credit and get a rebate from this situation. The money, I guess, has been sitting in trust, Frank, and then it had to be, has a reserve, and it had to be distributed to the, to the members. So you, you have the benefit of that, and the, all the towns, including Wyndham, I'm trying to think of which towns didn't have, weren't in the deal, Dover wasn't part of that group, but I think otherwise generally, most of our towns got a little bit of money back. It was statewide, it was only about fifty-six thousand dollars or something like that, so it isn't a heck of a lot of money, but anyway, it's nice, they're trying to finish up their work and close out their books because they're anticipating big changes in insurance, they're the ones that used to cover the VHI and the health insurance premium as well as, but we still work with them, Frank, for all other insurance, right? We still work with them with our other insurance, so your liability and so forth, that's all covered as a blanket policy for the whole SU. And on that bid process, we reduced our costs by what, Frank, but?
Now, the former premium was a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, the bid came in a hundred and seventeen thousand, so a very significant reduction in cost, but we also did lose wind haul, so they accounted for some of that reduction. But this is, this is as a result of the Vermont School Boards Insurance Trust pool stabilizing after, after about ten years of development. We were with that pool years ago, and they weren't stable, and we had to, we had to rejoin the peerless commercial product, but this last bid was very, very successful, and it's a, it's a good organization, very stable, they have the reserves, the reinsurance, so I think we'll be good for the long run.
I have the letter here now, Leland and Gray, one thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars. Just for your information, since you're also representing some of these other districts, Jamaica, six hundred and seventy dollars, I'll skip Marlboro, they're not here, Newfane, eight hun, eight hundred and eighty-two, Townsend, five hundred and ten, Wardsborough, we have some Wardsborough students here, two hundred and eighty-seven, Wyndham, two forty-two, and the WCSU Central Office, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Should see that really perk up our revenue stream, right?
Right.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, we have administrative reports next, Durin's report was emailed with all the attachments, and I think there were copies available for those who didn't get the emails yet, right? Traditionally, there's some highlights that you want to talk about, and there are questions.
Twyla, just checking, did you get it?
Um, I did.
Okay, and how about you, Howie?
Yes, I did.
Okay, good, so everybody got the information?
So the first thing I wanted to share, I mean, really the principal's report is just the one pager plus the attachments, sharing highlights of the meeting with the friends of music and students and the music teachers, and as well as others who were passionate about music. We had only planned it to be about an hour in length, but there was so much enthusiasm, and students were kind of going in and out because they were performing that night in the pep band when a game was going on at the same time, and actually some members of the board were there, so I think it was a very fruitful meeting, and I, before I, others want to comment about that, at the close of the meeting, after we had gathered lots of, lots of ideas, it was all typed up and it was given to the music teachers because of so many things, possibilities for expanding and strengthening our music programs, it's really not humanly possible to do it all, and so it's for them, our music teachers, to prioritize and work with the administration, that is Melanie Zulinski, who over, the Director of Student Services, who oversees the music department and I, and we actually had a follow-up meeting with them already, gave them a deadline for them determining what their priorities are, in terms of where they're going to invest their time and efforts in the months to come, based on the ideas that were shared. But it's really the work of music teachers, the music department, with the support of administration, but they're really the ones doing the work, connecting with the students in, at the high school, middle school level, helping those students connect with elementary school, or then, or they themselves connecting with the elementary school, yep, in the elementary schools, sorry.
Yeah, didn't, wasn't there, I recall that there were quite a few kids, that there was a, quite a large, larger number of kids in elementary school who were taking music, was it this year or last year?
Yeah, there were over a hundred students learning an instrument at the elementary schools. Now, that's all the WCSU schools, so including Marlboro and Dover, so it's not, you don't get all of those students at Leland and Gray, but next year, we're estimating to have fifty-two percent of the student body of the entire WCSU, so I hear what your, what your thinking is on this.
Get some into it.
I was at that meeting, and I wanted to thank you and Melanie for taking the initiative of having that meeting, and all the students and parents who showed up. One issue that was discussed to great length was the difficulty of high school students to stay in music programs when the music in Block B is often in competition with other classes. And this is not an easy solution, there is not, well, we just have to do this and problem solved. It just seems to, and we talked about it to great length of the meeting, it seems that to address that, you need to look at the whole scheduling, which may require to move away from the strict block schedule programming model to a modified block schedule where we would have some blocks that are, what, ninety minutes or thereabouts, and some that are half of that. It's, it's a big headache, it's a very complicated solution, but I would like to think that there is a solution out there between the musics, the music faculty and the administration, there is probably a solution out there, it's still a long ways getting there. That being said, for the time being, it still remains a very difficult situation for high school students to take that E-block music and band and chorus. And, and parallel to that is that we have something in the order of fifty students who end up in study hall because they're not taking band and chorus. So, to be continued.
I'd really like to commend Durin, I'm holding this, because I know there was a sense coming from that big meeting that we had, that they weren't being very listened to and very accommodated, and this seems to have answered some of that. I'm wondering if the students had any thought on this block? Have you encountered this difficulty we're talking about, or?
Well, I thought it's on the modified block schedule.
Right.
I think that something definitely needs to change, and that is probably, I was looking at that as a good place to start. I, being in a class for only forty-five minutes versus a full block, about ninety minutes, it just really depends on the subject, whether it is better or worse, which kind of adds to how tricky it's going to be, but yeah, that's how I feel about it.
I agree.
Thank you.
I was also at the meeting, which I, I was really surprised at the turnout, I thought there was a great turnout, and there was a lot of really good ideas that were brought forward. There were three things that really stuck with me, the block schedule is a huge obstacle for music chorus students. I don't know how to get around that, but it's something that definitely needs to be pursued if the music program is going to continue and get stronger and have more students. And that is, I mean, the teachers have to get, get the students in those seats. The other thing that I thought was interesting was that the Journey East kids aren't in the band or chorus, because they have to get their credits for the year, I am-
Because they have to get their credits for the year, I understand that. But if you're, if they're going across, you know, the ocean to perform, they're not practicing, they're not singing. Where are they getting their time in to perform and be ready for their performance? I didn't get that question answered and I actually didn't think of it at that point of the meeting. And just the numbers that I was given, that there were 103 students in elementary school band and then from that 103, 22 in middle school, 14 in high school band. Now, I did not ask how many were actually in 6th grade that transferred over, but I would be really interested in that number because the numbers were really telling to me that we really need to support them.
I'll go on to the next one, is that okay? We've kept on music a long time. But, all right, so the first attachment that I wanted to talk about is the analysis of the Fall 2013 MECAP scores. And if you see a problem with the analysis, something incorrect, this is vetted by three people, us on the leadership team. And it's been shared in addition to you with the full faculty as well as featured in an edition of Monday Notes. But if there's, if you see something wrong, you know, this is not what I do full-time for a living, so I'm open to lots of feedback. On Monday, so yesterday, at our faculty meeting, we devoted the whole meeting to reviewing the MECAP test questions. The math department, separate from the others, focused entirely on the test questions. And the results for, in mathematics for grades eight and 11, were about the state average. It's far short of what our targets are. But it's, it's, it's been pretty, which I said, flat in terms of the performance in mathematics among our students. We haven't seen the kind of growth that we have seen in reading in comparison. There was a lot to celebrate, but it's on, but we're kind of, you know, state average. So, 35, 34% of students passing the test. But it was very exciting to see how well our juniors did, because two of them are here tonight and that they exceeded the target in reading and that, I think that's only happened once before. And the 8th graders did well also. And I do believe that that is a testament to the increase of instruction in reading and writing in their classes. I mean, you guys have been here five years. So, have you seen a difference in your classes? Are you being asked to write more in different subject areas?
Yeah, please do write in gym class and music and which I think is okay.
Want to say anything about that?
No, I think the extra practice makes a difference.
But, there were two concerns that emerged from the results. One is that we consistently have performed below the state average in writing. While there are some exceptions, like last year's 8th grade girls were great writers and as they were in all those subject areas. There is a great need to teach form in writing, grammar and mechanics, spelling. When the, we looked at the MECAP test questions, actually, there's another group called the Curriculum Council, which is a small group of teachers and I meeting. And we're the improvement team and we work a lot with data. That's required by No Child Left Behind. We have an improvement team at our school and our new members may not know this, but we are considered a school failing to make adequate yearly progress, like 95% of all high schools in Vermont, or secondary schools in Vermont. So, that's a whole other conversation. So, we have, so required by law to have an improvement team. We call it the Curriculum Council. And what we realized in looking at the test questions is the need to teach much more form. We are a creative school. We want our students to be critical thinkers. We want to see their thinking and assess them on their thinking, their comprehension, not necessarily if they spelled every word correctly and got all their, the quotation marks with the period inside and the comma where, you know, before it started and all those other mechanics, which much of the test is based on. Including when the student, so for example, most of the test questions for juniors is just essays. And so, you demonstrate how well you can write an essay by the grammar and mechanics and spelling. And so, that is another shift for us in which to move. And it makes a lot of sense to do that, but it's coupled with a problem, and this is a national problem, that fewer students read outside of school. You know, read books, read or Kindles. So, they, so we, just like in mathematics, what we want students to know, we have to teach them. Fortunately, there's a K through 12 committee and Stephen can speak to this more, focused on literacy. And they have a meeting already tomorrow and so they now have the fresh MECAP scores. And then, elementary schools did extremely well in every area, in every area across the board, where they can begin that conversation about where is spelling taught? So, because that's typically not a secondary school curriculum to teach spelling. It's more about cleaning up grammar and mechanics than more complex usage of sentence structures and semicolons and, anyway. So, that, we really need to do that and that's going to take a lot of new learning. And it's just, it's part of the journey. It's yet another shift where we raise the standards even more. And perhaps for every single thing you hand into your teachers that's in writing, like a short answer, you know, response or an essay, that you'd have a, like a form grade. So, in terms of grammar and mechanics, and a content grade. So, with opportunities for you to improve your form grade. So, that's, yeah. And the other area of concern is that our low-income 8th graders did very poorly in all three areas. And that's, that hasn't happened in the four years that I've been analyzing our data. Generally, in nearly every subject, every year, our low-income students performed better than the state average. But this group needs interventions. It's much more than form, it's about math, it's about reading. And so, I'm, we need to take steps in that direction. It's a really good time to catch them, that's for sure. The end of 8th grade, the transition into 9th grade. Yes?
I would think that something with the elementary schools, that it starts right there with writing and stuff like that. I think that would be very helpful. And form can be really basic too, you know, just getting the idea of how to, what you need to do to write a persuasive essay. It doesn't have to be fancy, it's just your beginning sentence, your supporting information and your ending sentence that almost matches your beginning sentence. And once kids get that, then they're, you know... But also, I was wondering, what year do you think will correlate with the beginnings of the math help classes and things like that when kids?
Next year.
For 11th grade or for?
Yes, they're the first group that did algebra for all.
That's been all the way through.
However, this is the last time we have the MECAP test. So, next year, they're going to be taking the S back, the Common Core test.
And those are harder.
And they will only have been taught the Common Core standards essentially starting this year. So, we can expect, I mean, I think in New York, they're, what was it, 20% of passing rate for their students. So, I wish it was, I never dreamed I would say, I'm going to miss the MECAP. But compared to the online test for Common and the bigger bear that's going to be, more people involved. But I did want to just point something out, Patty. Our, for the past few years, our students have been working very hard on introduction, clincher sentence, supporting evidence, citing evidence. The content is there, it's specifically when you capitalize. How to spell the word familiar, which was one of the MECAP questions. It's very basic. And texting, sorry to say, doesn't help. When you read a test and it says, "Today, number two, day." It's infiltrating the language.
So, what's the impact of the school on these grades? I mean, is there a financial incentive to do it better? Is there a punishment if we don't?
There is a punishment if we don't. So, this year, and I don't know if I talked about this with the board before, and Stephen's probably thinking, it's gone a long time now, but it's important stuff. So, because we're in year two of an improvement plan based on No Child Left Behind, there is $8,000 of Title I money that we use for professional development and interventions that we are not allowed to touch. That it is money set aside for what they call supplementary educational services. And I had to inform by letter to the parents that they can sign up for these SES programs, they're called. And they can go to the Agency of Education website to see the providers in Wyndham County, most of which are online, costing about $70 an hour for tutoring. And we are beginning the process to, thanks to Thera Fuller, the WCSU 21st Century Grant Director. She's in the process of applying for the WCSU to become its own supplementary education service provider. So, while a failing school cannot be a service provider, to quote the guy from the Agency of Education right here on television, he said, "Why would a school and teachers that are failing the students be allowed to provide the supplementary services?" Well, in fact, they are allowed to provide supplementary services as long as they're contracted with the WCSU. And there's five supervisory unions of Vermont that are doing this. So, when I, when I was reading the materials and seeing that what we were going to do to recoup this $8,000 and I read that, I wrote, I wrote right on the paper, bingo! Because they're the people already providing the services. So, K help, for example, can be funded this way. But that won't take effect until next year. The $8,000 that we most likely won't be spending. I mean, no one has contacted you, right, since we sent the letter a few months ago asking for these supplementary services? It rolls over to next year. So, it's $8,000 this year, presumably it's $8,000, hopefully not more, next year. But I'm fairly certain we will be considered not making adequate yearly progress again. Certainly not in reading. The first year, two years ago, it wasn't, we didn't make it in reading or in math. Those are the only areas that count in terms of adequate yearly progress. Last year, we made it in reading, but we won't make it. So, it was great, so we went backwards. I didn't have to include that in the plan. However, because a subcategory, low-income students, did so poorly, I'm sure we will be marked again for that. And for math, it will be interesting because did performing at the state average bring us high enough to be considered making adequate yearly progress in math? I don't know. But supposedly in 20, I mean, it is 2014, 100% of all schools in the state will be considered failing schools around the country. So, I don't know where this ends. And this is all that I shared with the teachers yesterday.
So?
Durin, do you have any follow-up on the low-income students? Have they come through K through the elementary schools here? Or are they more of a transient population?
I don't know. I mean, this is just come to light, so...
Because it was such a dramatic drop. I'm wondering if these were students newly moving into the district from, and that might account for the low performance.
Yeah, I have no suspicion that that's the case.
Yeah, we have no reason to believe that that's pushing the data one way or the other. Although, you are raising a question. Why are we incapable in Vermont of tracking the students' progress from kindergarten through 12th grade? It's because we have a lot of independent school districts like Leland and Gray and the WCSU who have our own information system that may not be integrated. I have just appointed a report card committee to try to make sure that the reporting system that we give to parents and so forth has similar elements across all the schools. But this, this was once a common practice in 1967. I have a copy of the WCSU Elementary School Report Card from 1967. An employee gave it to me as a little presentation, a little gifting. The grades were pretty good, too. Anyway, but, you know, it's kind of an old idea that's come back around. But you're asking, you know, we should be able to see how many of those kids moved in, how many kids moved out. They are, they do have identification numbers in the state system. But the state doesn't have the wherewithal to do that analysis. And of course, some other states take that for granted, but we don't in Vermont. I'd explain one other thing for the public listening TV, that the reason why it's predicted that 100% of the schools in Vermont or across the nation will fail, public schools, is because the standard for not failing is that 100% of your students, regardless of their socioeconomic status, regardless of their IEP status, are proficient, or proficient with distinction.
100%?
100%. What's the quote from Cat and the Hat? 100%, 195... Yeah, something there is a quote. I just read that from a place that we go.
Well, we knew this when they, when this was started. This was created by math-challenged people. It was going, it was just guaranteed for public schools.
Pretty idealistic. But I apologize, it's hard for repeating it, but I do think, now that we're on video and people are tuning in from the public, that I take every opportunity to remind myself that not everybody knows what, you know, what the well-informed board knows. So, apologize to the audience too, if you've heard it before. Thank you.
So, the last piece, anything else about MECAPs or student performance?
The new test with Common Course Data Centers will be exciting in the sense that we'll have national data and not just statewide or certified tests. And every test used to be so uniquely different that you couldn't compare students in Texas and students in California and students in Vermont. And we will be able to, so, and by all accounts, Vermont standards have been very high nationally.
That's true.
So, we might look better, quite honestly, when we have national data compared to just comparing ourselves to our MECAP regional area, which is a particularly high testing region.
Well, we, thank you, Jerry. We do expect, being the Superintendent's Association and the Agency of Education, do expect or anticipate that our kids may do relatively well to other states because of the reasons you point out. And, in fact, we'd be somewhat disappointed if we don't do better. That would be parallel to the NAEP testing and the National Assessment of Educational Progress, which we don't get data on from our kids, but our kids are taking it in 8th grade and 3rd grade, I think. Anyway, they, that's compared nationally. And it's only compared on a state-by-state basis nationally. And that's where Vermont always comes out, you know, top five or something, historically. And some people have attributed that to just our small size or greater, greater, higher level of professional training on the part of the teaching staff. So, you know, it remains to be seen. There's no particular research I can quote on that. That's a good, good point. And the other thing I want to make sure about the new test is you realize although it's going to be online, which causes some people to be, you know, somewhat concerned, we do have the infrastructure in the SU to support this. I'm assured that we're technologically able to pull this off. We've had a pilot already in Dover this year. And we, and we had a pilot in Wyndham. And so, we're pretty confident that we can have this happen without too many technical glitches, knock on wood. And then, the other thing about the test that I think is so marvelously informative to the administrators, the principals and teachers, is that the student, it's a self-leveling test. The student is not, is not, in the 3rd grade, is not taking just the 3rd grade test. And if they make proficiency, fine. If they don't, they're failing. In the 3rd grade, you're taking a test and if you answer very well, you may prove proficiency at the 4th grade level or the 5th grade level in this subject. Or you may also find that you're only at the 2nd grade level or 2 and 1/2, you know, halfway through the 2nd grade. That's all going to be possible now because the test questions will adjust to the response of the student to make them more difficult or easier. The other thing is that a teacher in the classroom can give the test at a different time to the students. It's not the same test. The kids can't cheat. I mean, you can't tell your neighbor what the test question's going to be because everybody gets a downloaded question different in response to what they previously answered out of a huge database, national database. So, this is very promising because it's very difficult for us to show growth right now. If your son or daughter was proficient in the 3rd grade, I can guarantee you they got at least a 340 on the MECAP test. And if they were proficient in the 4th grade, they got at least a 440. But if they got a 340 one year for 3rd grade and 440 for the next year, all it means is they've been proficient both those years and there's been a certain amount of growth to get proficiency those two years. It doesn't tell us what really was happening in terms of their skills, so, their achievement. So, we're looking, I mean, we're getting better at this assessment piece in terms of we, in the nation. But whether it lives up to my expectations is another question.
Is the online piece that is going to be used next year, has it already been tested?
Yes, it's been piloted, well... Yes, it's been piloted. Well, it's going to be certainly improved from the pilot that they just did. We had, I think it was about ninety schools in Vermont that did this pilot this last fall. Dover, as I said, was one of the schools that did it, Wyndham did it as well. So they didn't get the data back. You know, they're just volunteering to do that, and then they...
But it worked?
Yeah. Well, yeah, it was, well, it worked. But the reason for that was on two levels. To check out whether each SU and school district had the technical capability, the bandwidth to make this thing work when you have all the kids sitting down at computers one time. The other thing was to actually test the validity of the questions, the reliability of the questions in response. So obviously, they'll throw out some of the questions they had, and they'll put in some new ones and improve it. The test won't occur, though, until the spring of two thousand fifteen. So this next fall, we won't have the interruption of the testing cycle in the fall, in October, that we have endured over the past NECAP and before that, the NSRE testing schedule.
Will these tests do everything all at once?
No, well, I imagine there's sections...
Usually do science in the spring.
Well, there's sections of math and language arts. That's all that's going to happen on the Sback test. The science will come along, and that's one thing that, you know, whenever you change what you're doing, then of course you lose something. So we had some idea there are going to be NECAP tests in science.
Until two thousand sixteen.
Oh, okay.
So...
That's good.
Yeah.
We're not trying to do everything at once, but, yeah.
So the, I'll go on to the last piece, if that's okay?
Okay.
Information about Semester One behavior referrals. We, as administrative team, look at this data to see what kind of adjustments we need to make in terms of supervision and searches and other concerns that arise. And something that, so just a couple of highlights is generally the seventh grade has the fewest behavior referrals of any grade. And this year, they are by far the largest class, and two-thirds of them are boys, and they have a lot of referrals. And so we, I think that can be attributed to a number of things, but I think the greatest factor is that we have very high accountability for those students. This is the first year that we have a very strong seventh-grade team, and they're keeping very close tabs on those students. The other thing that is, there are two areas in this report that are new that I haven't reported on before. So on page, on the second page, it says demographics of suspended students. While we don't have particularly more suspensions this fall, I was very curious of who these students were based on the, I mean, it's basically the same as the NECAP categories: gender, free reduced meals eligibility or low income, and special education eligibility. And I, what happens next with this data, I can't tell you, but it's telling us more about who are students we can identify as a group and perhaps need to spend more attention with. So if special, students eligible for special education are twice as high represented in being suspended, perhaps that needs to be a conversation when they come to school, come to Leland and Gray, to come to understand and working with their case manager what the discipline system is about, what the rules are, so more than what all the other students are getting. Because generally, we say, "Here's the handbook, fifty pages have fun." You know, not quite like that. But, you know, it's, and there are sections that are gone over in the advisory, but many of our students with special needs do have a reading disability, so perhaps it needs to be gone over in much more detail and with a lot of empathy. So that's one piece. Any questions so far? Yep.
Be interesting to me, sixty-six percent of free or used price may correlate somehow to the low achieving kids. I mean, if you're low achieving and you're not getting stuff, you tend to act out more.
Yeah.
So I'm sort of seeing a correlation between those two facts. We had an extraordinarily high number of low-income students not performing well, and now they're, here they are being suspended, at sixty-six percent. So they can't feel very good about themselves. Also, you can talk about bottom piece, the prices?
I will.
Okay. I'll get into that.
I was just wondering, the color coding infractions, could you describe that? Just, I mean, what would be what? Yep. So a yellow referral is for documentation purposes only. Giannina, I'm the teacher, okay? And Giannina refuses to follow a reasonable request. And after lots of prodding, she finally does the right thing, and I, but I want it to be documented in case it's happening in other classes. So she gets, so that's an example of a yellow referral, stuff that a teacher has dealt with and there's no other consequence. An orange referral is late for class three times, cutting class, disrespect, continued refusal to follow directions, but perhaps not becoming a behavior pro. It's usually referred to as minor incidents. And red referrals are fighting, substantive use violation, bullying, harassment. And that was the system I found when I got here. I'm not sure either that originated, but it's... And the last piece of data that I thought I'd talk about was the crisis team responses. When I, when we, the Youth Risk Behavior Survey data released a couple of months ago, I know we've been very busy at a, as a crisis team. Every time a student expresses contemplation of suicide or suicidal ideation, the crisis team convenes and it takes hours. And I'm the head of the crisis team. And Melanie Uzulinski is on it, too. It's always a very delicate matter, and the most important thing is the learning of other students is not disrupted. So really containing it in the main office area, whether it's parents coming, it's, I want to say police involved, but that really doesn't happen, or transporting a student, you know, which generally means walking over to Grace Cottage, because we don't drive them. So it's very, very strict protocols that we follow. And we've been really busy with it. So the, you may remember that while suicide attempt is no higher at Leland and Gray than in the state average, but the incidence of self-harm, or what they call, what's it, non-suicidal self-injury, that's what it's called, and that's aside, is significantly higher at Leland and Gray than the state average. It's twenty percent. But actually, the national average, they think, is seventeen percent. So I can't even say it's significantly higher. It's a somewhat higher, but it is a phenomenon that was once a clinical behavior, now in the mainstream. I did not expect to see that we were dealing with thirty-three different students who were experiencing suicidal ideation. That's an average of once every three days. I wish they were spread apart like that.
How is this compared to other years? Is this an increase?
This is baseline data. We never collected the data before. We, I mean, we have the information in different students' files, but this time I said, "I want this, you know, in this way."
No, I'm grateful you did, because this is very high. This is...
But I wonder if it's higher than other schools. There is a, and I don't know if they've held this conference before, but in May, the Vermont Principal Association is hosting a school mental health conference, and two of us will be attending. And I will be asking that question. So what's going on in your schools? And I, from what I understand, the conference was put together in response to schools' requests, but to what degree they're dealing with these incidents, I don't know.
And of course, Brattleboro Middle School is just helping with the national suicide.
Yes. And when I was at People's Academy, it was a very significant problem. So it's three hours from here. But I was also struck by the fact that about half of those who were experiencing suicidal ideation actually went ahead and had further assessment. So it wasn't just getting together with the guidance counselor, asking ten or fifteen questions, but instead having...
Seventeen out of those thirty-three.
That's right. That's right.
Can I ask, I assume that the school nurse is part of this whole thing, you know, as far as if kids come to her regularly, "I have a headache," or "I'm having a tough time breathing," or "I'm..." Because sometimes these things have physical manifestations. And when put together with other things, it's like, all of a sudden, it opens up. It's like, are they always wearing long sleeves even in the summer? And having physical manifestations, having, going to the school nurse a lot. Those kind of things are little red flags, because girls usually do the cutting.
So well flagged. They have a weekly educational support system meeting, and Arlene Hanson, our nurse, is on that committee, and we talk all the time. And if it's, yes, she is just an integral part. That concludes my report.
I passed around, you know, some charts and stuff from the Youth Risk Survey. I found that's available through Dorin's office or Arlene Hanson. I serve on a school health advisory council and with Arlene Hanson. And so we look at the data over time, the data on what they call Youth Risk Behavior Survey. There are actually some encouraging trends in the data. But this issue about student safety certainly is continuing to be, you know, a chronic problem with a certain percentage of our students. And when you, you know, when the voters go out to consider the budget, certainly should be reminded of the needs that we face, that we're trying to address in the public sector, specifically through the public school system. No one needs to be reminded that, you know, it's very important to be able to take an older education in school, but, and that's an expense, an investment. But on the other hand, these other issues are, in some ways, far more troubling and far more difficult to deal with. And we certainly have had a full-time school nurse at Leland and Gray for, I think it started shortly after I was hired in nineteen ninety-nine. But, you know, the need for counseling services and other services continues to be incredibly strong.
And the kids are here more than they're home.
Well, we have a difficulty connecting kids with services. So, you know, the distance to Brattleboro, to places where such, Grace Cottage is convenient to the school, but it isn't necessarily that convenient for someone living on the other end of Wardsborough or in Dover. You know, so connecting students with service providers is another challenge that we have. And frankly, our transportation system is lamentable at best, not entirely adequate. So, you know, this is, this is the place where it's likely that kids are going to get the best access to what is needed. We ready to go on?
Yeah.
What can I add?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
A few months ago, you talked about a dental clinic at the high school. And I'm sorry if you did give us an update, I don't remember. Could you just quickly tell us what happened with it?
Sure. So once a month, the staff of Dr. Wodiskey, so next door, West River Valley, West River Family Dentistry, they devote one day each month to Leland and Gray students. And we receive fifteen hundred dollars from the Stratton Foundation, and that covered the first visit in December, and no more. So I called them and said, "Help," and they sent another check for three thousand dollars. Woodworking teacher Dan DeWalt wrote an article for The Reformer lamenting the fact that the principal's not as focused on teaching and learning, but instead is looking money for, looking for money for dental care. And a new famed community member called up the school and said, "I want to send you money." And so I got another check for fifteen hundred dollars last week. And that should bring us through June. And an amazing thing has occurred that I did not expect would happen. First of all, a student who hasn't talked to me in three years told me all about her visit to the dentist. So that was really, that was like the most personally gratifying thing ever, because I thought it was just mud forever for this kid. But somehow she knew I was involved. So that was just tremendous gratification that, you know, that your work has meaning. And so when I spoke with Senators, our US Senators' Office, Sanders and Leahy, they kept pushing me to enroll students in Dr. Dinosaur. And Leahy's office called me three times to make it crystal clear, "If I have students who may be eligible for state Medicaid and the families are choosing not to sign them up, then I'm never going to find sustainable funding for people who would otherwise get care, because it's very likely those students can get care." And they referred me to a navigator. Tomorrow, a woman from Southeast Community Action, Southeast from my community, action name is Amanda Sabo, is coming here to sign up parents through Vermont Connect, you know, Obamacare, but it's happening. People, I put it in Monday notes, people are coming to sign up themselves and their kids for health insurance. I can't believe this is happening.
And they'll get free health insurance.
Well, I don't know if it's free, but she's going to work with them to figure out the right plan. And all they have to bring is their social security number. And it's just incredible, because they'll be able, through the social security number, they'll be able to verify everything through, you know, the federal databases, as opposed to all the other programs that you have to sign up for. You have to have a mountain of paperwork, and not every parent has those things. So that means that in continuing the dental clinic, the cost will be significant, I hope, will be significantly reduced. The program will still exist, because about half the students who have gone to the dental clinic were eligible for Medicaid but hadn't gone in years. And so they, the, Dr. Wodiskey is only charging us at the Medicaid rate, which is, I guess, less than half than what insurance normally pays for fillings and extractions and other procedures. And so those who still won't be eligible, because there's still, there's still a whole other group where, you know, you have health insurance, you don't have dental insurance, and you can't afford dental insurance. It's still possible. And so there's, there is that gap. And then, of course, students of mine who are over eighteen, because there's, they are no longer eligible for Dr. Dinosaur's Medicaid. So I'm just, it's pretty exciting. And she's going to come back a week later. So she's going to come here for two consecutive weeks and see. And the second time she comes, whoops, sorry, is parent conferences. So she can have a whole display and really do much more outreach. I just can't believe that it's evolved like this.
So the dental clinics have been happening every month since December?
Yes.
And do you have a sense of how many students have been?
About a dozen go each time. There have been repeats, because some of the, in December, about half of them had to go back again in January, because they needed further work.
Thank you.
Want to say one thing?
Sure.
I just wanted to thank you for all this information, particularly the referral information, the behavior referral data. I was on the school board for seven years. I think through three or four other principals, and I have never seen this information presented at a school board meeting. And it seems pretty in line with a school of this size, I mean, just a lot of kids' mischief. So I think you get an added, added principal. Thank you so much for bringing this up. Good job.
Well, I have to thank the staff for that.
All right.
Sorry.
So the importance of that is, of course, it provides a baseline, and then we can gauge what our investments in various aspects of the program are benefiting, which outcomes that we see. The president, the new Secretary of Education, Rebecca Holcomb, is very much a proponent of multiple measures. She is very much opposed to the narrow view that only math and language arts counts, only the NECAP scores or the Sback scores in the future. So the new accountability model that she's going to put together will certainly call attention to the other measures of student outcome that we should be looking at. Well, I brought this hat for a reason. So now it's time for you to think about something a little bit from here. There's something that brings us all together, an experience that's common to most of us, anyway, although there might be an exception sitting around the table. But all of you have read either The Cat in the Hat or at least something else by Dr. Seuss.
Yeah.
Oh, there you go.
Oh, Barry Fenton.
Nice.
Yeah. I gotta just balance it, because it's a little small. But I had the pleasure of visiting Wardsborough School as the cat in the hat. I have an incriminating picture on my phone here that you can see the details. And I had the pleasure of reading to all of the students, grades K through, K through six. six. Unfortunately, in separate groups, so it took me a while. But I read their choice of Dr. Seuss in the class. So, we went from, I think the kindergarten, the kindergarten had to vote, they had to vote because they had competition between Green Eggs and Ham, ABC, and the Fox in the Box. I think that's the name of the title. And Green Eggs and Ham won. And then, there was, oh, darn, I forgot what first and second grade. It'll come to me. All the Places You Will Go was one that I read, too. Two, yeah, for the older kids. And actually, I received that book from my, one of my, what do you call it, committee members, professors reviewing my dissertation. As a congratulation, she gave me a copy of All the Places You Will Go. So, anyway, I wanted you to all think of, out there in the audience, think of what your favorite Dr. Seuss book was. All thinking? Guy wrote an incredible number of books. I'll start out, oh, you're an old turtle, good. I liked Horton, Hatches and Egg.
Hell, yeah.
That was a fascinating book. Anybody else?
Left Foot, Right Foot.
Left Foot, Right Foot? Oh, it is.
Green Eggs and Ham.
Green Eggs and Ham.
It's like a five thousand hattie for a father.
Oh, I loved that one, yeah.
They're very knowledgeable books, aren't they?
There you go. Lorax.
The Lorax. Oh, that was what I read, first, second grade, the Lorax. Yeah. Anybody else? How are you?
Lorax.
Lorax. There's so many. There's so many, I mean, it's really.
Starving, sneeches.
Horton, Here's a Who.
Horton, Here's a Who.
I liked Your Old and Turtle, too.
Your Old and Turtle.
I read that all the time.
Lorax.
Lorax. Frank?
I skipped down.
The Grinch Stole Christmas.
Yeah. The Grinch Stole Christmas. And there was one about Oobleck. What thing, what was that one? Was it For Our Family or Oobleck or something? Oobleck was the stuff that came out of the sky. It was like globs of things. You don't know that one? Nobody knew that one?
I'm too old for that, so.
Oh, no, you're not.
Don't talk to me, man. Yes, Peter?
Oobleck.
Oobleck, okay. Anyway, I pointed out to the kids that regardless, and we analyzed, I actually did them a response to text about why the stories were attractive to them, why they were engaging. And they came up with three things, right? It's the illustrations, it's the rhyming. And you, you know, if you read one of those books to a bunch of kids, and you leave out the last line, they're going to, the last word, they're going to give you what that last word is. You know, it's really amazing. And then the fact that there's actually some significant message. You know, there is a theme, there is a, there is a plot, not so much a plot, but there is a theme, there is an essay, there is a moral, moral, yeah, what? Yeah. So, well, anyway, I was in Wardsboro because, just to support what the prospects are for the future. Obviously, Leland and Gray, the success of Leland Gray students is dependent upon the preparation in the elementary schools. And Wardsboro was the second highest in the state for performance and reading and, as a school. And the, that was ninety-eight percent proficient of all the students in the school. And in mathematics, they were, I think, fourth in the state or something like that. They had ninety percent of their kids were proficient with distinction. They had like thirty-seven percent of their kids were passing with distinction. So, this prompt, what, this is very heartening to me because my administrative team, the principals of all, agreed to invest the consolidated federal grant money in Fawness and Pennell Approach to Reading and Engaging Reading Progress and Writing at the elementary schools. And it also involves a lot of speaking. And then, Fawness and Pennell, it's the name of two people, two experienced educators from Ohio. And then, on the math line, Wardsboro was also the first, not only in studying Fawness and Pennell with their staff, or their staff providing professional learning for their staff, but also with Dr. Mahesh Sharma, who just finished, I don't know if he finished the course. We had two more days of a course for geometry, grades six, for teachers, grades six through twelve. And we had some teachers from other, other school districts, other supervisor unions attending that course. That was Friday and Saturday, this last Friday and Saturday. So, I am encouraged to think that we will see those kinds of results from our other schools as well. Maybe not to that high degree, but certainly the trend lines are all very positive for our elementary schools. And this bodes well for the future of potential performance for Leland and Gray. And I suggest we just need to stay focused on those things. And certainly, writing across the curriculum at Leland Gray is very important. Restructuring, resequencing the math courses and expectations in math and science is also very important. Second topic, I had, we've had a visitor a couple of times in the SU here. Once in the fall, just last week, once again, the name of this researcher from the University of Pennsylvania is Daniella Hall. She hasn't come to Leland and Gray. She's studying small elementary schools, rural, rural schools in Vermont, particularly as part of her dissertation. She's spent as much as a day at Wardsboro, Dover, Marlborough, and Newbrook. And I'm really eager to see what her research will point out and inform the administrative team and the boards in our towns. And she also attended two town meetings, Wardsboro's town meeting and Dover's town meeting. So, her research is rather holistic. The other piece of news I had, I'll pass it around to you, this is from a Wardsboro parent and retired professor calling attention to, my attention, to who pays for higher education. And this compares Vermont's support for higher education compared to the rest of the nation and compared to the year 2000 and now. And it's pretty depressing to see how little Vermont supports the tuition for students at UVM. That's basically what it's comparing. I'll pass it along. It was apparently from the Chronicle of Higher Education, March 7. So, I appreciate, I always appreciate getting something from the public informing me about various issues. And certainly, the University of Vermont is underfunded by most comparative standards for a state university and has the highest tuition of any state university in the country. Don't get too depressed, I'll pass it around to you. They'll come around to you, too, and you can see the other states. The other thing I'll pass around, just for visual for the board, is that one of your duties is the revision or the review of policy. And this is all the mandatory policies. Allison's made a little chart here because she likes to be color oriented. And so, it has the dates, when they're adopted, on here. I have a spreadsheet that keeps track of this for all eleven school districts and, you know, it has cells, let's be up to around a thousand and some cells in this thing. But the green ones are the ones that need attention for review. They're outdated because they're more than five years old. And the pink ones are the ones that I need to get an electronic copy for, but I'll just pass that. So, you have an idea, those of you that are wondering why we haven't done anything about policy for a while, it's because we've been busy. But now, we better get busy back on our policy review so we get them up to date. In some cases, it won't take much work because the policy's good to begin with. You know, we'll continue it. And I think it'd be great for student members to look at these policies and see in what way they can be improved, from your perspective. The other thing I have here is, I have a bundle that you've already seen electronically, but this is the various proposals for restructuring of governance of school districts in Vermont that are going before the legislation now. And you certainly should be considering your view on the subject and sharing it with your local representatives and our two state senators, Peter Galbraith and Jimmy White. Questions?
Just one. I have, about the governments, I read a letter to the editor in the message today. And this person said that one of the bills that's being considered is the fact, is that the school boards would be appointed as opposed to, was that, I missed?
I don't see that, yeah, no, that, I haven't read that anywhere. They may be confusing this with the, there's a, there's a school-based advisory committee that could be appointed.
Okay, they called, they called it the school board. But it was a letter to the editor by just some.
Yeah, well, I can see how some, I mean, it's important to bring this kind of, this thing up. Because, for example, if the, let's take, for example, Leland and Gray became a school district pre-K through twelve, the board would probably be similarly represented as it is here today. However, Wyndham or Townsend or Jamaica has a school, has an elementary school, this law would say that there's an advisory committee, you know, besides this board sitting over the whole thing, there's an advisory committee to the principal in each of the schools. And that, I think, was, was appointed. But that's the only thing I can make sense out of it for you.
Okay.
The, any of these timelines go out quite a ways in terms of implementation, but. The other thing I wanted, Frank's passing out some financial information here, but I do want to call your attention to the fact, I sent out an email announcing, you know, really, is a, how shall I, a mixed emotional situation for me. I worked with Frank for a long time. Frank's taken a position in Brattleboro as the business administrator for Brattleboro. You know, frankly, a much larger financial responsibility. And I commend him for stepping up to that. I certainly want to thank him publicly for all these years of service. He's going to continue here until July of one. July of one, he'll take his new position. And I'm sure he's going to work as hard as ever to make sure that everything's buttoned up and in good order and that we have a smooth transition to, you know, a replacement, although I don't think we can replace him. I think we certainly will. Shortly, I'll be advertising and put out a search and we'll have a candidate review process interview and make a decision. And it'll certainly give us an opportunity to reflect on what we value about these many years of service. And I'm thanking Frank.
All right. Lots of luck, Frank.
He will be missed, Frank.
All right.
I can't imagine a buzz in, a budget season without you.
It'll happen.
Well, it'll be my first.
I think it's a big loss. I'm very envious of Brattleboro or the supervisor union.
Well, okay, so you're going to get on to compliment him. I will be specific. The thing that Frank always brings to the table is not only integrity of the numbers, an audit has never had a problem under his direction. And not only is he capable of multitasking and taking care of all these different districts at the same time, but he has studied academically and earned his doctorate degree in education and administration. And I don't know that I can hope to refine another candidate who has the same experience, sensitivity, and connection with the kids and the learning and the schools as he does with the accounting and the fiscal and financial controls. That is the, that's what we've been blessed with for a long time in this SU. And I think that people will only become too aware of that wonderful balance of skills background and interest.
How long have you held this position?
Sorry?
Nineteen eighty-eight, so in twenty-five years.
Wow.
So, regardless of how skilled and experienced the person is, twenty-five years of experience. What?
You started when you were fifteen?
Yes.
Well, in fact, I, Frank, you know, I certainly will be concerned in the future that we, fortunately, he's not going off to Florida someplace, so fortunately, he'll be available to lend some insights and advice to someone, you know, in my, in that capacity when they try to figure out, well, why is Townsend doing this and Wardsboro's doing that? And, you know, we have some unique personalities and traditions in our towns in the WCSU. And, you know, that's something, too, but you learn that through twenty-five years. But, you know, it's going to be easily taken for granted, so. Anyway, Carrie Wood.
Okay. Do you want me to give the financial reports? Okay. Thank you, Stephen, I appreciate it. And I really have enjoyed working in this supervisor union all of these years. Tremendously supportive communities, top-notch board members and administrators in the buildings are top-notch. And as Stephen said, we're getting great results. And so, the district is in good hands, the institution is strong, and things will, things will carry on just fine, I'm sure. So, I've handed out a financial report, just the usual single-page summary of the budget plan. For any of you new members, if you haven't seen the annual report, glad to get you a copy. The present plan that I'm going to report on is in here as well as the proposed plan. So, this will be just a brief report. The page that reflects income and expenses shows our revenue plan, six point eight million. And it's a balanced budget, if you look down at the bottom on that first column. There are times when we propose a different amount between revenues and expenses, and that, of course, has to do with prior year surplus or deficit. But for fiscal year fourteen, we presented a balanced budget. And here we are in mid-March, and this is as of today. So, with three months to go, you would expect somewhere around thirty percent remaining. And if you look at the lower right-hand corner here, you see that that is the percentage of remaining approximately that we have to go. Two million, one ninety-five is about thirty-two percent of six million, eight. And that, so, I'm giving you the overview, the snapshot that says we're basically on track. A couple of specifics, many of you remember last year, we had quite a shortfall in tuition revenue, the local revenue that would come from Wardsboro, Dover, Athens, Crafton, and Stratton, Marlborough, some of the surrounding towns. This year, I think we're going to be, we're going to be a little bit favorable, or at least on plan. You see that first line there, nine hundred and forty-three thousand is our revenue plan. And we've received after the first semester billing, a little more than half. So, I will be doing the second semester billing soon. And I would expect, as enrollment stays as it is, we'll end up the year a little bit ahead of the plan, which will be helpful. The revenues in the state grants will also be a little favorable. And that's going to be because we probably will exceed our expenses in the special education budget. If you look at the middle of the page, you see special education is in the middle of the expense group. And that's not at thirty percent, that's at fifteen percent. But again, some of that, we talked about in our fiscal year fifteen budget planning, we have made a shift. And we're seeing that this year, alt-ed, alternative ed, you can see is, it kind of stands out as a very underspent budget category. That's where we have a plan of one hundred and eighteen, and we've only spent fifteen. Well, that's been shifted into special education because of the way we've designed services to meet student needs. So, that was somewhat expected. But overall, you can see we're, we're in a favorable position in terms of just revenues versus expenses, a little bit ahead. Four point seven one five in revenues and at the bottom, four point six one five in expenses, so about a hundred thousand dollars favorable. And then, when we look at the reverse page, the balance sheet, this is the measure of solvency, assets of one point four million and liabilities of about the same, which most of it is this one million dollar note payable. That's, that's something that the board approved back in July, and we'll have to look at that again relatively soon. It's the mechanism we use to cover expenses in the interim of tax, tax payments coming in. But you may recall, we ended up the year with about a hundred thousand dollar negative fund balance. And we did increase the proposal for revenues. And we did increase the proposal for revenues to fund that in the fiscal year '15 budget proposal. So as long as we stay on plan this year, I think we'll be right where we want to be as we begin the new fiscal year. So in general, I think we're in pretty good shape, but we do have to be careful about making up for that prior year shortfall that occurred. Glad to answer any questions, if you have them. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Well, we've got town meeting roundup on there.
Emily and I just wanted to give an opportunity for everybody to, you know, sound out or share something about town meeting, if you, if you think it's relevant to our work here. That's the, that's the purpose of that. Neither of you get the town meeting, you know? No. You can't vote yet, right?
Jamaica talked more about a $900 cemetery thing, if you did any budget, school budget stuff. Like 25 minutes about that, but budget, boom.
Brookline brought the schoolhouse, but that really pertains to New Brook, probably.
Yeah, but that is interesting, that they do want to retain, transfer ownership from the school district to the town for the Brookline School Building.
And Frank, brilliant motion with an amendment that if the town had to repay the...
137,000?
Yeah.
Which was issued in 1989 as a bond issue for renovations to the Brookline School Building, that the sale would not go through.
And have enough time for another town meeting so we can figure out how to buy, how to pay for it, yeah.
How about Townsend, you had a, you had actually paper ballot vote on the budget, right?
It was a long day.
Long, you had the longest day in history, right?
It was like Vernon.
Yeah, not even close to Vernon.
Anyway, the school budget passed by paper ballot, something like 80 to 60 something. Okay, and getting back to Jamaica, I have received an email correspondence inquiring about a petition to call for a special meeting to raise $12,000 to support full-time pre-K.
Oh, no.
Yeah, because we did discuss that, there was a lot of support for that.
The Wardsborough did approve a budget with, let's see, no, it's Wardsborough. Wardsborough did approve a budget with a full-day pre-K, and Townsend has a full-day pre-K. So we are, you know, catching on about investing early in our students. And I think that's about, oh, well, Marlborough passed its budget a 21% increase, that's the most remarkable increase, and that's an increase on the taxes as well. That took a long time, but it wasn't a close vote.
21% increase in the budget?
And the taxes. The tax rate, turns out their CLA and everything turns out to not have an effect, so they just derived 21%.
They must need one.
They, they're pretty amazed, but, well, the thing about Marlborough is they're not part of the bargaining, the professional bargaining agreement was with the teachers' association, so they talked with the teachers, and the teachers decided to accept no increase at all of any kind. And the board also wanted to reduce their compensation from $1,000 to $100, so that's what happened.
But the budget went up by 21% regardless?
Yeah, it's $250,000 worth of unanticipated, well, it's anticipated because it's part of the service plan for next year, but special education. And, you know, you, those of you at the board, coming to the organizational board meeting next week, will vote on the agency fund and vote on the grants, but there may be a motion coming up from Marlborough or perhaps some other towns, but anyway, the fact that all these independent school districts are on a roulette wheel of life, you know, like the ball rolls around, and if they happen to get a couple of kids that are very expensive, no one wants to quibble about the kids' needs or the fact that they need this support and we need to provide it. But the fact that we're all driving the cars down the road without insurance, just hoping we don't have an accident, is not a way to drive the education system. The state reimburses extraordinary expenses, but only after the fact, so they have to be loaded into your budget. Now, if the Marlborough District Board had proposed a budget with an increase of compensation for the staff, then their budget would have gone over the threshold, and they would have to pay two-for-one for every dollar that they raised, you know, if taxes above the threshold. So they're, you know, they were just up against it. Their per pupil, equalized per pupil cost is $16,000. And, you know, that's all by formula, but it's, you know, it's, so, you know, be thankful you're not in that situation, and you aren't the moderator of that meeting. But Dover passed their budget, and they did include an article for the International Baccalaureate Program Elementary School, so that'll be a great project for them to undertake. It'll take a three-year process to become certified. And as I said, Wardsborough voted their budget, I guess we've been around the block, Wyndham certainly passed without difficulty. So the next problem is Leon Gray's budget. We'll get into that later on the agenda.
That's our next thing.
That's the roundup. Oh, I see. Well, that's, see, isn't that amazing, we put that together?
Nice segue.
I tell you.
Right. Slide right into it.
Yeah, so as you all know, you were, you received a petition at last meeting that had 194 certified signatories and had other late-ridden petitions that probably pushed that up over 220. And the total vote cast at the election, at the vote on the, when the budget was defeated by 10 votes, was, I think, around 250 something.
254.
About 254. So if the vote comes out, see who comes out, we'll have a budget, or just to prepare you for the worst, if the budget is defeated, then we'll have another board meeting to decide on perhaps pursuing the cuts that we previously had prepared for the board because the board had directed a revised budget downward, if necessary. And you'll have to decide which of those to take and present in a revised budget to the public if we're defeated, if your proposal's defeated a second time. That'll take another 30, 40 days, and I will have to work with the teachers' association to see about how we can delay the issue of contracts or how we work on this, because I can't issue contracts without having the money. If we have no budget by June 30th, the budget that we would have to live with, you know, until we got another budget, would be the year before, the present year's budget.
But as board members, we can advocate in our towns for people to get out and vote.
Oh, yeah.
That's our job.
And if they ask you questions about the budget, you can certainly answer them. Or direct them to me or Frank, you know.
For the budget information meeting.
And there is a budget information meeting coming up.
We shouldn't tell them you need to go out and vote for the budget.
Well, yeah, you should, you certainly, you can certainly direct them to the rationale, and certainly you can take a position. There's no restriction against you expressing your political opinion.
Okay, I just want to know what's crossing the line.
You haven't, yeah, well, you haven't lost, I mean, what should, what are you concerned about?
You can't start a Republican.
Yeah, yeah. This is, this is not just put a tape over your mouth and say, well, I hope you come out, you know?
Cash is the law.
But I can, you can call people, right?
Absolutely. Certainly. Tell everybody they know.
Yeah.
You know, that's our job.
After all, well, if the public thinks you're doing too much, they can vote, you know, they can vote you out of office. I mean, you're representing them.
Yeah, yeah, fine. They gotta wait for years.
Well, then you can say what you want, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think that's all we need to do. Okay. Good. Moving on to new business, we have some orientation, you would distribute orientation materials, right, for the new board members? Yeah. I call your attention to the booklet, Charlie, can you hold it up? Yeah, you got it there. So this booklet's available for any board member. I have some other copies in my office if any of you board members from before would like a hard copy. This is available online, the bsba.org, you know, it's a tremendous resource for you as board members. You will now begin, when we get you loaded up in Montpelier with the proper email, so you will get the monthly board, what's it called, board, board meet, it's not board meeting, it's something board report. It's something about legislative, anyway. And you get legislative updates. Your executive director's name is Steve Dale, D-A-L-E, just so you know. And so here's what's going to happen with your email, and of course, you can object and tell me that privately, but what happens is that we, as a board member, that's what I'm telling you, we're members of the board over here on my right, too, you'll have an email address that says, first initial, last name, at wyndhamcentralboard.org. It's a big, long thing. And we'll use that to communicate with you legally, officially, about board information, board business. The reason why I urge you to use that one, even though it's a pain to have to go to a different email, there are tricks you can use yourself under your own control to get it to transfer to some other email. I don't advise that, because the purpose of having it separate is so that your personal mail is not mixed up with the board business, your public business. The Freedom of Information Act, the sunshine law, public meeting law, all these will make it possible for an attorney to access your board communications and check to see whether you as board members were collaborating or doing something apart from the board meeting to influence the decision of the board. So you have to retain your impartiality and you have to, you know, keep those things separate, is what I'm saying. Now, the danger you have when you advocate for something, not so much in terms of a budget, but if you were advocating for a certain employee or a certain department or something like that, then you have to be careful that you don't advocate so strongly that when it comes time for a quasi-judicial hearing, which could happen in terms of personnel decision and so forth, you're not viewed as being partial or biased. That's, that's the, that's what you give up a little bit when you step on the board. So, questions? There will be more materials coming to you as board members in terms of orientation, but don't hesitate to give me a call, 365-9510, at, you know, anytime to, and talk to Allison and send a message to me if she can answer your question or provide the information. The website, if you go to Leland Gray's website or to the WCSU website, you'll see a place on WCSU website that has all the boards. If you go to school boards, then you'll see all the boards listed separately. Under that, you'll see all the board's minutes, all the board's agendas, and all the board's reports, principals' reports. And in the old days before, I couldn't manage any more superintendent reports. I apologize for not being able to get those out of the way.
You want me to go on? No, you look down here.
No, I was just making sure there weren't any questions.
That's all old business, I think, right?
That's still on the new business. Next thing we're talking about was the VSBA information meetings regarding the different proposals in the legislature on governance. The VSBA is holding a series of meetings for board members. I don't have all the dates, but I know that they are holding one March 19th at Green Mountain High School at 6:30. If you go to bsba.org, you can actually sign up online for that. That way, they know you're coming, and there'll be enough materials and everything for you. I know I signed up, it was relatively painless.
Carpool, too. The new open meeting law says that board members can carpool together now, as long as they're not talking about any business.
Right, they can talk about baseball. We can talk about weather, baseball, you know.
If all of us carpool, we'd be like the clown car, you know?
Yeah, well, that'd be all right, I'm all for a little entertainment, levity, but that's, yeah, just don't be hung up about carpooling is what I'm saying. That finally got the Attorney General to give us a decision on that, which is favorable.
Right.
Yeah. There's another one this Thursday, the 13th. It's at Mill River, though, it's a little bit farther away. It's over by, it's over by Clarimand and Rutland stuff.
Yeah, Mill Rivers.
But a couple farther north. And then there's a webinar at the very end on the 26th, I think. Now, that's a bad date, not April, maybe March, wouldn't it? 26th of March is when we need for our organizational meeting, too, but I think it's in the afternoon. Anyway, go on the VSBA website, I certainly think it's a way to get an idea of what other board members are thinking in other SUs and in the region.
Right. Okay, now Linda.
Now me.
Unless there's questions about that. Good. Go ahead.
Okay, I came across something very exciting in the reformer, so I brought it. Two of our Leland and Gray students recently won first place at the Vermont Farm Show's Winter Forestry Contest. It was a statewide contest, 160 students participated, and Sam Rushton from Grafton and Corey Neistram from Brookline were first-place teams. So I thought I, as the career center representative, I thought I'd bring that to the board.
Maybe you can pass that to me, so we get the names right and all that.
A lot of it was identification of barks and leaves. It was a very highly skilled, and they took first place in the state.
Yeah, cool. Congratulations to both of them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda would be to approve the bills and pay orders.
We have the bills.
Oh, you have to talk to Frank?
Just a couple of things that seem to be missing.
Okay, we could skip ahead to the consent agenda. Howie, did we have a consent agenda in Ohio before? I couldn't remember. A consent agenda has the minutes in it, and any items on the consent agenda, once you move, you can't discuss them, you just, everything's approved. So, you know, if there were corrections to the minutes, we would remove them from the consent agenda, otherwise it just goes forward. It's sort of more, it's more efficient, we hope.
Another example would be a policy that you've already warned, and you've discussed this, so it might be approved, the policy, and if a board member had still more concerns about it, they would remove it from the consent agenda, then we could discuss it, and then it would, you know, be voted on.
So we would need a motion to approve the consent agenda, which contains the minutes of February 26th, as long as nobody wanted to pull them out.
That was Mike and Jeremy, Chairman. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Only the ayes have it, motion passes. Okay, these are good now?
Yes.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve the bills and pay orders?
I make a motion to approve the bills and pay orders, to whatever, et cetera.
Okay, we have two general fund warrants, one in the amount of $111,030.13, and one for $50,837.70, and a payroll in the amount of $112,106.04, for a total warrant and payroll Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So it's been moved to, moved and seconded to approve those? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, they're approved. We don't need an executive session. We have a lengthy reminder list of meetings, the VSBA governance one we talked about. March 25th is our budget information meeting. That's 7 o'clock here in the library. March 26th, the next night, we have a WCSU organizational meeting. All are welcome to attend, but three of us should go, Emily, me, and Bruce. The vote is April 2nd, and we can all make phone calls and talk to our friends and do whatever we can to encourage that. I imagine there'll probably be some sort of press coverage, too. And then our next board meeting is April 8th at 7:00 p.m. here. Oh, and in May, we'll have a red study committee meeting. What's that? Anything else we need?
Just wanted to add one last thing. We mentioned this briefly at one of our previous meetings, and I was thinking about it again, and I wanted to bring it up for your consideration. The idea of Townsend as the host town for the high school, of having somebody at their select board meetings once a quarter, whenever, a representative from our board over there, without any decision-making power, obviously, but as a sort of an act of courtesy, you go over there, you hear them, if they have, they don't even need to put us on the agenda, you're just there during the select board... you're just there during the select board meeting, and because, as you all heard, there's definitely a sense that we disrespect them, we don't listen to them, we do whatever the heck we want. And I'd like to dispel that by an act of good faith, if we could.
Okay.
It's just a suggestion, we could talk about it. I think you should go. I'd be happy to go.
Oh, that's in favor. Is that a motion? I don't think it's a bad idea. I'd like to see, I think it would be nice of them to send us an agenda. I mean, I'm sure they publish an agenda, and I, you know, I'm ashamed to say, as resident Townsend, I don't know. You know, but if we saw their agenda, and there was something on there, maybe we could, you know, pay attention to. So we would maybe go to a pertinent meeting. And I hate to show up for one where there's no Leland and Gray, and then miss the one that we didn't know about, you know, or just, you know, go for, if it sort of makes sense. And then we could even take turns.
Or have some prior communication with them to sort of establish some kind of a schedule, like, I don't think that there needs to be somebody there every, twice a month, you know, every one of their meetings. Maybe once a quarter is enough. The point of it being, it's just sort of a communication. And this board could prepare a very short synopsis, that if the board rep is, you know, called on, well, this is what we have to say. You can watch the entire meetings on video, you can listen, read the minutes, but, you know, here are like ten bullet points of what is happening at Leland and Gray that pertains to the town of Townsend.
Okay.
It's an idea.
Very good. It's a good idea.
So.
They do have, they make twice a month, aren't they? Mondays?
Maybe twice a month, and they would have just reorganized, so I don't know who their chair is now.
Looks like their next meeting is next Monday, the seventeenth, at six. And yeah, twice a month.
Yeah. I could certainly reach out and see if there's an agenda to be had, and we can start.
Yeah, don't try like the President to start, you know?
Thank you.
Just a couple of things, I don't know how you go about putting things on an agenda, but I thought it might be a good idea to maybe next meeting, schedule a policy meeting. We start that now, the six-thirty thing?
Yeah, I'll take it under advisement with Emily. That's how the, that's how the agenda gets put together. She might zip for an email, just so it comes from the board and so forth.
And to review our goals for the new board members that we did, what, a couple of years ago?
Okay, yeah.
Catch them up on that.
You're talking about the action plan goals?
Well, that meeting that we had at Emily's house, that went all day, and we did board goals, right? It's probably time to redo them, but...
Board goals with Ray Prue.
Mm-hmm. And I'd like to suggest that we come up with some ideas about how to keep our meetings tight, moving along. We've got students on our board now that...
Okay, well, then you have to be quiet. We're gonna...
Get home, and just...
That's how.
Good idea.
And try and stick with the agenda timing somehow, but...
Well, not too bad.
No.
But it did look, it looked like we weren't going to make it there for a while, but, yeah, we said nine, it's nine oh whatever.
Move to a German.
Second. All in favor?
Mine's for the car.
Nine oh two. Well done, Polly.
We should record, no?
Yeah.
Where's the timer?